We're in tonight's regular city commission meeting for November 7th, 2022. Tabitha, can you give us a roll call, please?
There you go.
Here.
Commissioner Hetrick.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Leachman.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Present.
For invocations, I would like to welcome Pastor Corey Landreth with Real Life Christian Church.
Good evening. Thanks again. It's always an honor to pray for you and for the city that we have called home. Let's do that now. God, we thank you for your blessing and your presence here. We thank you that you never let us go, that you are always with us, that you are always present with us. We are never outside of your care or control. Even when we desire to be, you are always there. God, we pray tonight that you would give wisdom and guidance to the commissioners, that they would direct the affairs of the city well, that they would execute those things with justice and mercy. And God, just like you, they would watch over the people of this city and show care, compassion, again, justice for them. God, we pray for the upcoming election tomorrow. We just ask that it would go smoothly. And Father, we just thank you that this, we can go through this challenge. Sometimes it's a challenge, but we can go through it well and that the power transfers easily and quickly. We do thank you for that. God, I don't know exactly what they're going to be talking about tonight, but I pray that you would bless them, that you would give them guidance, wisdom as they discuss, they make decisions, and then that those decisions are carried out with justice and mercy. God, you spoke to Amos about your people, Israel, and you said this, "Let justice roll down like waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream." And we pray that that would be the reality that we would see here, that from top to bottom in our country and around our world, there would be justice and righteousness present, not just here, but in every place, in every level of society, in every place that exists, that there would be justice and righteousness. God bless these men and women tonight, the decisions they make, the people who come and present to them for the betterment of this community. We thank you for it and ask your blessing on it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we don't have any proclamations or recognitions tonight, so we'll move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only and no action will be taken. And we don't have any personal appearances tonight, Tabitha, is that correct? Perfect. Move on to public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items that are not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only and no action will be taken. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment tonight? Seeing that there are none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering approval of the city commission meeting minutes from September 19th and October 17th, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's no old business, so we're going to move right into agenda item number 11, new business, public hearing for projects 584 and 585, Myers East paving and sanitary sewer improvements. And so I need to open the public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing for that now. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak during the public hearing? Okay, seeing that there are none, we're going to close the public hearing, and I would consider mo- motion.
I move to approve an ordinance levying special assessments. Is that the right one?
Yes.
That's the right one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I move to approve an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, as previously authorized by Resolutions Number 200922, 200923 of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Second. Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that there is none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into agenda item number 12, creation of a community improvement district at 142 North Main Street.
Yes, Mayor Commission, Mitch Walters here with Gilmore Bell as well, if you have any specifics, questions on the CID. The city of El Dorado has done a CID in the past, but none of this nature. So this is a special assessment CID. It's similar, just like the public hearing we just had, where this project will be repaid via special assessment by the property owner. In your packet, you've seen a petition signed by that property owner requesting the creation of a CID. What he is wanting to do for the property, this is work all outside of the building itself. So it's covering some cost of electrical infrastructure underground. It's covering the cost of a grease and water separator for a potential future restaurant in the building will be placed in the alley. It's encapsulating some water service upgrades up front. So it just worked outside of the periphery of the building envelope itself. If approved and created, he would repay these improvements via special assessment on taxes, just like any normal city-driven infrastructure project. It is estimated the project cost in total will be $88,436.25. With that, you see some city at large costs. The city would like to commit to removal or replacement of the alley, so we'll remove the alley. Public Works Department will do that work, and then once work is done below ground, we come back and restore the alley. Also included in that is pouring a transformer pad for energy for where they need to place a transformer to serve the building upgrades.
I have one question. If Main Street would choose a CID for that block, he couldn't get taxed again, could he?
Could it be enlarged? It's a different CID. I mean, generally, these are sales tax-driven type of things.
Yeah. Come on. Mitch Walters with Gilmore Bell, Long County, the city. Commissioner Lewis, could you repeat your question? I'm not sure I got all.
If Main Street would do a CID for the entire block to fix up the buildings and stuff, infrastructures?
Yeah.
Would he be double taxed, or would it just, he fall under this one?
Is, so if the entire block were to do a CID?
Yeah.
If the existing CID could be expanded to include the rest of the block, or you could draw up a new CID that would specifically exclude the parcel that this, that the property owner owns that's petitioned for the creation of this community improvement district?
So this CID, this CID that we're creating, though, is just for, it's a special assessment CID. So it's not like a sales tax CID like we've seen done elsewhere, where we're collecting maybe sales tax from that community improvement district to be able to do improvements. This is, this is just leveraging the CID special assessment tool to be able to pay for the electrical upgrades, the work that we did, that Nathan needs done down there.
It's an avenue for him to finance improvement.
Right. The Community Improvement District Act is a flexible act, and as Mayor Young points out, allows for the imposition of sales taxes within the CID or the assessment of special assessments to pay for certain projects under the CID, which would not themselves be allowed as eligible costs under the regular special assessment act. The CID allows for the construction of private and public improvements, and so that's the avenue that we identified that could be applicable towards helping to facilitate this particular project.
I just wanted to make sure he wouldn't get double-dipped.
Right.
Yeah. You ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
I move to approve ordinance in creating a community improvement district in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, authorizing a certain projected, where therein approving the estimate cost of such project containing the legal description and map of boundaries of the district and approving the method of financing the project.
A second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh.
With respect to this project, there's no issue with bonds included in this documentation, and so the project will be financed without using bonds. We will be involved to create the statement of final costs when the project is done, so you'll see this project come back before you, when it's actually time to levy the assessments for the final cost.
After the hearing and then after.
Correct.
Interesting. Thank you so much. Agenda item number 13, bid award for the CDVG commercial project at 142 North Main Street.
Yes, the building owner himself, Nathan Enzinger, is here as well. He's very familiar with his project. The city of El Dorado, along with Nathan, was awarded the CDVG commercial project rehab grant. This is number two for that building. It's been a lot of time in between since we originally have received or awarded the grant for Nathan's project to this point, but there was a lot of planned development involved and extensions needed because of material cost, labor shortages, what have you. Bid opening was held. There was only one sole bidder on the project, Marsaw Enterprises, and being that low bidder, they came in with a bid of $320,780.25, and were asking you to consider to accept that bid. There is no city dollars in this project. It's all grand dollars and private funds by the owner. Hope you have any specific questions, Nathan's gonna be happy to ensure to indulge you.
Nathan, will you share with us what this particular grant will help you do?
The grant will put a new elevator where the freight elevator currently is. We'll have to raise up the roof for a penthouse for it, and then we'll also have to lower the pit area itself. That way, the hydraulic system can go below. There'll be initial or some added sprinkler systems for the elevator shaft itself. Then there's going to be some roof, of course, involved with that since we're raising it up, so it'll have access to the basement, second floor, and third floor. And then we're doing windows on the north side, which would be the second floor of it, and then taking out what is currently a garage door that accesses the freight elevator and putting in glass doors on that side. Then we're doing plumbing for commercial kitchen on the second floor and finishing out commercial bathrooms on the second floor as well.
Very good. Thank you.
It's a lot. It's really exciting, and I appreciate all the work that you're putting in there. You guys have done a lot, and it's a great place.
Still collecting art?
What's that?
Still collecting your art for the second floor?
Yeah, we've got, we've got some pieces there. And we've just had a great support and help from the city and Engineering Department, El Dorado Inc. and Main Street, so it's, it's really been very helpful to be in a community that helps you through these challenging processes, so I appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
You ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
I move to accept the bid of Marsaw Enterprises in the amount of $320,780.25 for their rehabilitation at 142 North Main Street and request sole source bid approval from the Kansas Department of Commerce, subject to meeting the requirements of the CDVG Commercial Rehabilitation Grant Program.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Agenda item number 14, municipal code amendment to Chapter 8 regarding tall weeds and grass.
Any questions? We have a proposed ordinance in front of you today that will land in Section 82820 of the state code. The primary two definitions of the work we are implementing is natural landscaping, which will be defined as any landscaping technique in a yard or development site that does not contain noxious weed growth or noxious weed seed and preserves or uses primarily native vegetation indigenous to Kansas in a design intended to exhibit the character and spirit of nature by arrangement of the plants and drainage patterns. Similar to the arrangements of natural prairie, woodland, or woodland plants to get easy drainage. Weeds will be used as follows. Any plants growing uncultivated in and of context surrounding plant life which may attain such large growth as to become wind-drying, a fire base to reduce the property, brush and wet vines, any plants which bear or may bear seeds of a downing or waning nature, any plants that are located in any area which may harbor rats, insects, animals, reptiles, or any other creature which may either, which may, which either may or does not constitute mass to help public safety or welfare. The grass and weed hyperstructures will remain six inches for grass and weeds in the RIS R1, R2, R3, MBC1, C2O1, PD, and TH zoning districts. Those are primarily going to be our residential and commercial and office zoning districts. And then 12-inch grass and weed limit in the I-1, I-2 zoning districts, which are our industrial zoning districts. And then the addition to that section is that the public officer designated by Section 82840A shall have the discretion to exempt from the terms of this chapter the following: construction areas, undeveloped areas, natural landscaping in areas designated by the city manager for agricultural use, which is defined in the city calendar. So with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
I have two.
Okay?
If we pass this, will this affect Steve Funk's project with the irises? Are they going to have to have somebody down there weeding that the whole entire time until they turn it into a botanical?
Um.
Because right now, you're telling them they can't have weeds in there, and then right now, it's all weeding. I mean, it's, it's all weeded up. That's over there by the compost.
Yeah, I know where you're talking. So the weeds would have to stay below six inches.
So they're going to have to hire somebody to go in and keep them cleared out?
I mean, subject to.
Are they going to have to mow it all down?
Well, not the flowers, but we're talking about weeds. So the flowers, I mean, this is.
Right now, it's getting, it's getting really weeded up in the summertime because she's passed away and turned it over to the city, and nobody's taking care of it.
Yeah, I mean, if nobody's taking care of it, it gets to be higher than six inches in the residential zoning district. It would not be compliant with this, with this ordinance, yes, on the credit.
You say the city owns it?
What, the property?
Yeah.
No, she donated it as a park, and Steve Funk is, is turning it into a botanical.
The Irish lady.
Right. Right next to the dog park.
Did not know that.
I'm pretty sure that transaction hasn't happened where we have any ownership in that property at all, unless, I'm unaware. I don't think he was asking about that.
No, no. They were handing out brochures and stuff to, for fundraising for it, and that was one thing I wanted to ask about. And the other thing is for the New Mana Garden there on Gordy.
Okay.
It's no longer being used, and it's sitting there. It's got a few trees in it, a bunch of weeds in it.
It'd probably be a violation of this chapter, but I don't know, I'd have to go look at it or have the public house go look at it. So I mean, just because, I guess, point of clarification, just because someone has planted natural grass or vegetation, if it's not being maintained, I mean, it would be just like one's yard. If you plant a nice yard, but then you don't maintain it, it gets to be, it exceeds the height of the requirement, then it would be, it would not be compliant. Now, the exception would be that if they are granted an exception under this ordinance, then it would be allowed, but for example, if you're growing a native grass planting, for example, and it's, the height is higher than that, but you have exemption, then you're good to go. But if, if you just let your property grow, then you'd not be compliant with this. You'd have to come to compliance.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
I am, yes.
I move to approve an ordinance amending Title 8 of the city of El Dorado, Kansas municipal code relating to health and safety, providing additional provisions for weed and grass control.
Second it.
With motion and second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. All right, that's it for new business. There's nothing under discussion items, so we're going to move on to city commission reports and advisory board updates, and we will start with Commissioner Hetrick.
The library board has not met since our last meeting, but the only thing they have on their schedule is the 17th. They have a writing workshop. We have a meeting scheduled for the end of November.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lewis?
On El Dorado Inc., there really wasn't much talked about, except for Sarah's, is going to go in there and take it over full-time, and Linda's going to work less in her thing, and she's moving over to the Greater Wichita Partners. She'll be doing Inc. and Greater Wichita Partners. I was going to thank her for her time, but she doesn't left, so.
Thank you.
We had a meeting that they've had to reschedule, and I haven't seen anything back from Javon yet, so.
No report. Next one.
El Dorado Main Street met the last Tuesday in October. Most of the discussion was on the Old Fashioned Christmas, which is coming up December 1st. It's a four-day event. On Thursday, December 1st, we'll be thankful Thursday, and the Clydesdales will be here for that. So it's worth just going down to see the Clydesdales.
We know of our awesome businesses downtown.
Well, yes, the Clydesdales.
Yeah, the Clydesdales.
Friday, December 2nd, is the Remembrance Tree at District 142. The children's choir and ballet dancers will be at the Coops. On Saturday, December 3rd, the Chambers having their Christmas decoration giveaway. There is Christmas at the Oil Museum. Santa Central is downtown. The parade starts at 5:30. The tree lighting at the courthouse is at 6:15. There will be music on the steps of the courthouse, and then Christmas in Boomtown back at the Historical Museum. And then on Sunday, the 4th, is the Holiday House Tour. So they have been working on getting Christmas season started. The college banners have come down, as you've seen, and the veteran banners have gone up. They are still working with a company on the sound system. Evidently, the company that they were working with either went bankrupt or just shut down, so they had to start off over again, but they seem to be quite happy with the companies that they have partnered with this time. Thankful Thursday this month, it's already come and gone, but they had the chili cook-off, and I believe there were five or six different stations where chili was being cooked and being savored by the people who were taste-testing. Steve Wade gave an update on the Masonic Building. Trick or treat down the street. Went from 62 participants last year to 82 participants this year, giving out all that candy to make all those kids hyper before they went to bed on Monday night. I pity the parents. I'm sure a lot of that candy got put high up in the pantry. But there were estimated to be a little over 4,000 people that were down there on Monday. That's a lot, a lot of kids and parents, but it went off well. Tomorrow evening, Main Street is having their Downtown District Assembly at Charlie's from 5:15 to 6:15. Scott's going to be talking about the downtown stormwater flooding. Chief Holton is going to be talking about downtown safety, along with Sergeant Thompson. Sierra Bond, who is the Communication Project Manager, will be introduced to the assembly, and the downtown master plan will be released. Parks and Rec, I believe, meet next week or the weekend, sometime this month, we meet.
I can give you an update of the sound system if you want to hear, but I'd say it's too soon.
All right, it's fine. Thank you. So the FABC didn't, I don't think they mentioned this last time we talked. So I don't really have anything other than to say, just everyone keep in mind that on Friday, the 11th, is Veterans Day, so make sure to take your opportunity to recognize, thank the veterans in your life and those, those around us that have helped provide the country that we live in, the community that we live in, and also take a moment to remember those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our community. And then Saturday is the Celebration of Freedom Parade, Saturday downtown, so it starts at parade time.
And vote tomorrow.
Yeah, vote tomorrow.
And I'm going to be working on the parade Saturday.
Pardon me?
I'm going to be working on the parade Saturday.
Me, too.
Good. Are you the announcer?
Yeah.
Maybe you'll get on the right side of the street?
Yeah, it keeps me out of the sun this time. It's your last chance, Leon. So that's what we've got. So the city manager.
Christina, didn't get you? So actually, celebrating freedom, there's many events going on. On Saturday, November 12th, there's a biscuit and gravy breakfast provided at the BMW booth from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. Then there's going to be pre-parade activities beginning at 10:40. The Butler Side Banners Performance and American Legion Riders ride-by. The parade will begin at 11:00 AM. Then that will be followed by a hot dog feed from 11:30 to 1:00 PM at Gordy Park. The World War II Reenactment in Lebanon will begin at 1:00 PM at the Kansas Hall Museum. And then on Sunday, November 13th, the Elks will have a chicken noodle dinner from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, $10, veterans are free. The Butler Band's musical salute to veterans begins at 7:00 PM at the Butler Welcome Center. On Tuesday, November 15th, the Elks essay contest and EMS concert will begin at 7:00 PM at the Performing Arts Center. More information can be found on the city's website, the Chambers website. There'll be lots of activities to celebrate freedom beginning on the 11th. Let's see. Here recently, the El Dorado Police Department led a tabletop exercise with USD 490 in the Sheriff's Department and a number of other partnering agencies to go over the situation in the event of a, well, to, I guess, go over a situation in the event of a school shooting, but it was really to get people together so that we could kind of understand what that would look like from a preparation standpoint. It's definitely not something that we would like to practice, but it is something that is good to kind of get everybody on the same page, and hopefully we won't ever have to use those skills, but it is something I think that the community needs to know that we've done so that we have some kind of understanding of what that looks like. The Public Utilities Department recently completed the industrial tower maintenance that needed to be done on the industrial tower, water tower on the rest of the town, rather the west of the town. This tower now has one of our new logos on it, so if you drive by on the turnpike there, you'll be able to see El Dorado brand on our new tower, but the important part is that the interior and the exterior of the tower is. But the important part is that the interior and the exterior of the tower has been inspected, cleaned, and then also painted, so it should be in good shape for the next 15 to 20 years or so. And so it is also been put back to the service. And then, as you may have heard, the city received a million-dollar grant from the Kansas Department of Transportation recently. Governor Kelly announced the recipients of the KATACOSSO program. City of El Dorado again received a million-dollar grant from that program. We will use a portion of that, or those funds for both paving and downtown drainage improvements along Central Avenue to include a four-foot diameter storm box that will go along Central Avenue, which should help greatly mitigate a lot of drainage problems we have during significant rain events. So that is coming. We'll be starting, we'll be starting designing that, and then we'll align those construction efforts with the other construction projects that will be taking place on Central Avenue, such as the Waterline Project and some of the other stuff that will be coming as well, so that we have to turn the street up ideally when we want. So that will be coming soon. It's, it's good to know that the City of El Dorado has received over $4 million of grants in the past several months, so that's, that's pretty good. We continue to seek out grants as we look to improve our infrastructure and mitigate some problems we have. I think that's all I have for that.
Thank you, David. So I think that's all for the regular agenda. I think that we have a brief executive session.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KSA 75-4319, which will be one for the purpose of discussing non-elected personnel and succession plans, and reconvene the meeting at 6:15 p.m. in the City Commission Room.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, same side. Motion carries. We are back from executive session, and no action was taken, so I would consider a motion to adjourn the September, or the November 7th meeting.
Second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, same side. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.